The city administrator has determined that an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent because of the COVID-19 pandemic and the declaration of federal, state, and local emergencies present to Minnesota statutes, chapter 12, and other laws. Further attendance at the meeting by any member of the city council, city staff, or the public at the regular location in the city council chambers is not feasible due to COVID-19 pandemic and closure of city hall to members of the public. As a result of the foregoing, the special city council meeting will be conducted solely by telephone and other electronic means as provided in Minnesota statute 13D.021, and no in-person meeting will be conducted in the city council chambers. Seeing that this meeting is being held remotely, when I call your name, please indicate your presence. Councilmember Balsanic.
I'm here.
Okay, councilmember Brock.
Here.
Councilmember Fults.
Here.
Councilmember Leifeld.
Here.
Councilmember Lund.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Here.
Let the roll reflect, all council members are present and a quorum has been established. I want to acknowledge while there is no public hearing scheduled for tonight, the city council has received comments prior to the meeting, and these have been distributed to all members of the city council. Councilmembers, are there any council items to be considered? Councilmember Balsanic.
No.
Councilmember Brock.
No.
Councilmember Fults.
Uh, no.
Councilmember Leifeld.
No.
Councilmember Lund.
No.
Councilmember Vaughn.
No.
Okay. Uh, Public Works, we have a postponement of the public hearing on special assessments for 2020 neighborhood infrastructure improvement projects. This item will be introduced by city administrator Dan Watichia.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as you recall, the 2020 neighborhood project involves improvements on 15th Street between Pine and Tyler, 23rd, 24th, and 25th Streets, Cannon Street between Vermillion and 22nd, and also improvements on 22nd Street. Uh, in total, it is a $3.4 million project, and roughly $770,000 would be specially assessed to adjoining benefiting properties. Uh, a assessment hearing was previously scheduled for April 6th. Due to the COVID pandemic, as well as our learning, uh, new equipment for remote access, staff is requesting that we delay the assessment hearing, basically to make sure that we have a better understanding and ability to use the equipment so that we can have people come in during a public hearing, uh, over the remote video system. Um, there's plenty of time for it. Uh, we have all the way up until early December before the assessments will be certified to taxes. Typically, we'd have the assessment hearing early in the process, but there certainly is time. If the council approves the postponement resolution, we will mail notice to all of the affected properties promptly. Do you intend to still proceed with having the project out for bids? There is no obligation to award the project, presumably, we're working ahead towards it, still occurring. This is more a procedure to make sure that we're, when we hold that assessment hearing, we technologically are able to do that. With that, I can stand for any questions.
Your Honor. So, Dan, in regards to this, obviously, we're going to, if I understood you correctly, the purpose behind this is just to make sure that all of the people in these neighborhoods have the opportunity to ask all the questions necessary, correct? We had some issues, obviously, all of us, most of us, not everyone, signing in tonight, so we wanted to just make sure that everyone's got the opportunity to ask their questions. Here comes my cat, I apologize, ask their questions, and let us make sure that we can assist them. Is that correct?
It is correct.
Okay, councilmember Lund.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I think it's, it's good that we're taking that precaution and, and taking the time to be sure that we can do this in a way that most people will have, or people have a better time being able to ask the questions that they have and get the opportunity to meet. Um, I do think that we need to be thinking about the long-term of this project, and by no means am I suggesting any, any actions right now, but we, we do need to be thinking about what it might look like in a couple of months if, if this does still make sense to move forward with. So, um, you know, we don't know what, what the assessment situation actually is going to look like long-term. Um, and, uh, you know, nor, nor do we know if it's the best piece of money at that point in time. We just don't know right now. So, what I'm saying is, I think we need to proceed like we, uh, like, everything will be, be able to move forward, but we should be thinking those thoughts now, um, so that we can make a good decision when, when time comes and bids come through.
Okay. Councilmember Fults.
Go ahead. So, I have a question for Dan. Um, Dan, was the contract already awarded for this project? I thought we already approved it.
No.
It hasn't been executed yet? Okay. And then, so, has the bonds been already taken out, the debt that needs to be taken out to be able to finance this particular project yet?
The, the project has not been awarded, uh, as well as the bonds have not been taken out.
Okay, and so, the bond market still hasn't stabilized, right? Because Congress hasn't fixed that part of the COVID bills yet to stabilize the bond market for municipalities?
That is correct. Um, in the last week, with financial, we've been a rush to cash, and the municipal bond market has collapsed, so nobody, no municipality has essentially issued debt. My understanding of the, um, uh, $2 trillion bill that's going through Congress, I think there's around $450 billion allocated towards enabling the treasury to buy municipal debt, in which case, be able to issue debt and other municipalities could too. So, that's waiting on Congress at this point.
Okay, so when we heard this neighborhood project a few weeks ago, I'm sorry, was that just the first hearing then? That wasn't, that's what it was? I can't quite remember. But that's, what did we approve then, just a couple of weeks ago? It was the first hearing, the first reading of the?
An overview of the project and scheduling the hearing.
Okay, that was it? All right. I just couldn't remember exactly what we all approved. All right, thank you.
Okay. Uh, councilmember Balsanic, any comments? Councilmember Balsanic, any comments?
Oh, there we go. I have to push a button. Uh, no, not at this time.
Okay, councilmember Brock. Any comments? Okay, councilmember Vaughn.
No comment.
Okay. Um, council, I would accept a motion to adopt a resolution postponing a public hearing on special assessments, 2020 neighborhood infrastructure improvements.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, council, any other discussion? Okay, you just have to scan. No other discussion? Uh, Clerk Flattan, please call the roll.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Yes.
Councilmember Fults.
Yes.
Councilmember Balsanic.
Yes.
Councilmember Lund.
Yeah.
Councilmember Leifeld.
Yes.
Councilmember Brock.
Yes.
Mayor Fassbender.
Yes. Motion prevails. Okay, postponement of the public hearing on municipal consent for the final layout of Highway 316, Mendat Improvement Project. This item, again, will be introduced by city administrator Dan Watichia.
One of the procedures for the Highway 316 project, and this is set out in statute 161, is that, although we've been working on this for, for a couple of years, as it comes in towards the end, Mendat gives us the, uh, expectation, it's not quite required, but it's, it's essentially an unwritten requirement to hold a public hearing for, before having municipal consent on, yes, this is the final layout of this project, that had previously been scheduled for April 6th, for the same reasons, wanting to make sure that we have technical issues worked through before having a large project that has had a lot of neighborhood interest for a couple of years, want to make sure that we have the technology working before we hold that public hearing. And essentially propose that we, by motion, postpone that schedule and hold it likely late May, early June. With that, I can stand for any questions, but it's, it's basically just postponing to make sure that we have technology working before tackling a, a subject that has a lot of interest from the neighborhood.
I have a question.
Yeah, I also will too, but go ahead.
Okay, Mary, we can't hear you, just so you know.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Oh, thank you, Your Honor.
Sorry.
Uh, quick, quick question for Dan, or even John Ensmann might know this. If, if we're gonna do a public hearing for this, do we know what, on the final design, do we have the final financial model made out yet of how we're gonna pay for it, or would we, would we bring a design forward that we don't know we can afford as of today?
I'm going to try promoting Public Works Director Nick Egger to answer that.
Can everybody hear me all right?
We can.
Good, thank you. Um, part of the, the public hearing event, or the, the meeting at which that municipal consent public hearing would take place, would include a presentation by Mendat of the overall financials. Uh, with our most recent updates from them, they, there, there may be some changes to that, but this hearing isn't, isn't a final commitment per se by the city on, um, the financial end of it. We, we will still have some things to work through there. It, it's really a blessing on the layout and the right-of-way acquisition components that go along with the project scope, so, um, it, it's another touch point. It, it gives Mendat the ability to go forward with doing their right-of-way acquisitions and then seeing it through to the, to the point where they would put the project out for bids in about a year from now. So, uh, th- this was a necessary step in their overall project, pre-construction process that they have.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor.
Uh, councilmember Leifeld, any discussion? Councilmember Lund, any discussion? Councilmember Fults, any discussion?
Yes, Your Honor, I had a couple of questions. Um, I know that in the last several months, there have been a couple of petitions that the neighborhood had pulled together, but I don't believe that the whole council, um, saw those, and I was wondering what was the follow-up that actually happened with those petitions? Like, I, I know, like, one was, they were petitioning, um, the median, and, uh, and then, in the end, I heard something that there were going to be a petition about responsiveness of Mendat or something like that, so, um, I don't, I, I was just curious, whatever happened with all those?
Um, I, I can't answer that, Dan, or?
Other than anecdotally, I have not seen an actual petition. Nick, have you, or do you know, I know you've been in contact with Mendat a couple times this week, if they said, if they've anything?
Yeah, we haven't talked about that recently. Um, I, I have not seen formal copies of these petitions. I think Mendat got served with a letter of some sort, uh, that had very similar, same sorts of, um, flavor, if you will, of the petition that was served to the city last year. Um, but i- in terms of a formal response to that, I, I don't believe there has been one on Mendat's part at this time. That's certainly something I can check back into, but I think we would, uh, have a chance for that to be addressed at such point in time when the public hearing does take place, for sure.
I'm sorry, well, what do you mean, that you'll, you'll address it, or that they'll have the opportunity to bring it forward?
Well, yeah, I'm sorry. I, I think we will inquire of Mendat what they would intend to do with what they have received, and again, I, I don't know that it's been a formalized sort of petition, if you will. Uh...
A number of the residents that are along 316 signed them. Like, you're right, I lose track of time so easily, so it was like a last year that they had, um, had a few, I think there's two petitions that they had, had gotten signatures on. One was, um, now that I think about it, um, one was about, one of the, one of the homes, one of the property's driveway, which Mendat decided not to move, so that, oh, and was good. Um, and then I think, I can't remember what the second one was, if, if the second one was in regards to the trails, or if it was in regards to the median. And then I heard that there was a third one that they had, uh, brought forward, and I think it had to do, something to do with the right-of-way confusion, um, on the west side. And then, just recently, I saw one of the other neighbors wanting to start one about the medians, and so, um, yeah, it's been, um, you know, been trying to be responsive to their, their questions and their comments, and I just wanted to make sure that they were getting formal responses in regards to these things, because I, I know that they're bringing them forward, but I'm not hearing back what was, if there has been any response. So, just to make sure that, um, that it's clear, and so that they don't, so that we don't have that public hearing, and, and then we act like they've never brought up these issues. Does that make sense? I just feel like that they, their concern should be addressed. And, and Nick, I know you've been doing it, Mendat has been doing a good job, I just don't know if it's ever been formalized, so.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'll, I'll respond to that as best I can. I think it's, it's been a, a good month plus since we've seen anything circulated from, uh, residents or property owners along the corridor with, with a petition-esque sort of approach to it. And what I recollect from the most recent one were concerns about the median and, uh, and that being the primary element of concern. I, I, I believe Mendat did respond to the person who submitted that via email, because I think that's how they received the document at the time. Uh, I really would have to, to check back on exactly when that occurred and what was said. I don't, I don't have that in front of me at this point, but, uh, the, the interactions and responses between Mendat and property owners is still ongoing, and they will still address things as they get, you know. I, I think there's just been a, a variety of, of submittals of that nature, plain old emails over time, that, um, that, that may not always take a formal letter sort of response action when they come in. Um, but, but I will, we'll check back on that, and we can report to the council with an update on how those have progressed over the last month or so here.
Thank you, in regards to that. And then my last question is, um, in the memo for this item, it said that you were going to publish with 30 days' advance notice, and so, I was wondering, um, what does that mean? Does that mean that you're just gonna put it in the Hastings Gazette, or are you sending direct mailings, or just really what does that notice look like?
Yeah, what has occurred, uh, up until this point with the April 6th date, uh, it did get published in the Star Gazette and on the city's website. We did not do a direct mailing for that. It, it's really a, uh, it's a di- little bit different process than with our assessments or our neighborhood projects where statutes require mailed notifications, but this is a larger corridor-type project, and so, um, I think we, we were, uh, landing on interpreting that as being those publications were, were what was required. Uh, if the council would like, when we, when we get to this, when we get to a new date for this one, we can certainly put something in by mail. I would recommend no greater than just the abutting property owners along the corridor for such a thing. I think it's hard to define where you start and stop on something like that.
I, I would like to see those individuals provided a direct mailing, and, um, I have been trying to email them with updates when I know of things, um, so I can, I can try to do my part, but I think it would go a long ways, uh, just because I know that a lot of those residents are ruffled about the median, uh, so that they feel that they're, you know, that we're being transparent, that they were given notice about all of this, so, um, I would appreciate it. Just the, the residents that are directly on Highway 316.
Okay. Uh, council, is that it? Councilmember Fults? Okay, councilmember Brock, any comment? Okay, councilmember Balsanic, any comments?
No, except to say that, uh, given the situation with this pandemic, uh, you know, we were, we were projected to have a $1.5 billion surplus from the state, but that's based on, uh, an economy that was revving along, and, uh, everything is gonna be coming to a screeching halt. At some point, they're gonna readjust what the surplus is, and probably say that there is no surplus, or a very, very small one, which the state is gonna have to, uh, protect itself and keep a surplus on hand for any other emergencies, you know, such as the one that we're going through. That being said, I am not hopeful that even next year we'll see any shovels turn, turning over, uh, on that project, so, uh, it, it's just, you know, fair warning to the public is what I'm saying. Uh, you know, we have a surplus that may not be a surplus of the state, uh, and we may have to just tap into, uh, the regular state budget to make ends meet. That being the case, any kind of bonding on, you know, statewide projects, including the 316 project, uh, may go up in smoke for a couple of years. And I'll turn it back over to you, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think, uh, council, I would accept a motion to postpone the public hearing on municipal consent for the final layout of the Highway 316 Mendat Improvement Project.
I'll move.
Your Honor.
Okay, councilmember Fults, councilmember Leifeld, any additional discussion, council? Clerk Flattan, please call the roll.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Yes.
Councilmember Fults.
Yes.
Councilmember Balsanic.
Yes.
Councilmember Lund.
Yeah.
Councilmember Leifeld.
Yes.
Councilmember Brock.
Yes.
Mayor Fassbender.
Yes. Okay, motion prevails. Um, under parks, we have the cancellation of city-sponsored activities. Item will be introduced by city administrator Dan Watichia.
Thank you. Uh, first want to point out that there's a, uh, several-page memo that was in your packets outlining a number of the parks and recreation activities coming up over the next couple of months. Um, also want to point out, just as a point of explanation, that, uh, this recommendation, although we discussed it again this morning, this afternoon, and, and staff still stands by the recommendation, uh, this was prepared prior to, um, the governor's executive order yesterday, so, questions about, uh, which I've heard several times today, why are we proposing, uh, closing activities a month longer than what the governor's proposing? Because we, we prepared this before the governor's dates were set. Um, the, and the real reason for looking at a long period of time, proposing through the end of May, so a little over two months out, uh, is really intended to, uh, make it easier for organizations and individuals, including the rec. department itself, to plan for, uh, use of the parks and, and facilities. Uh, the fear being, if we set a short timeframe, uh, we might be canceling things, and, you know, if we had to extend it, so if there was a, a two-week extension, another two-week extension, another two-week extension, uh, the worry is that that would be more difficult and more frustrating, uh, if people are trying to plan around an unknown future. So, we, we deliberately recommended going long, uh, so that, uh, it would be easier to plan and, and be less likely that we would have to rescind or cancel items after effect. And with that, I could take any questions, or I believe that Arts and Rec. Director Chris Jenkins is also available, and I can unmute his mic if there are questions directly for Chris. Mayor?
I ca- I will call your name for discussion, councilmember Balsanic.
Uh, no, nothing, Your Honor.
Okay, councilmember Brock.
Um, I'm trying to understand just the, the, why this date was chosen. Is there time needed to get the fields ready so that the athletic associations can need it, and we don't think we're gonna be able to do that? I guess I'm just unsure of what this date represents and how we came to this date as a conclusion.
Dan, I can take that, councilmember Brock. Um, looking, looking ahead into Dan's discussion already is trying to pick a date in the future, far enough out, uh, that it gives us a, a starting block for planning purposes for all sorts of parks and recreation activities, and also gives our local associations that starting block for planning as well. I would note too, that, and importantly, and intentionally, uh, within this action, we are also retaining the ability to, to start programs and allow facility use by organizations just as soon as it is, um, I'm gonna say legal to do so. So, as, as soon as the orders are lifted and those sorts of activities are, uh, okay- I'm going to say legal to do so. So as soon as the orders are lifted and those sorts of activities are okay and allowed to resume, that is what we would do. But for our purposes, we need a planning date. There's a lot of stuff with our department that's coming up. And we have to develop Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, et cetera. So this gives us a target date. And it does the same for associations. I know that there's concern with the associations. We've been in touch with multiple and have explained the same thing. As soon as orders are lifted and groups are able to congregate once again, we will certainly allow that and certainly encourage that. We want to be out there just as much as everybody else does.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Fults. You're muted.
Thank you. So the action that's being requested of the council, though, is clearly to cancel all activities through May thirty first. And I think it makes sense to cancel things to go along with the closing of the schools through May fourth. What the if you watched the governor's presentation that he did yesterday, he had said that we're in shutdown mode for the next two weeks. And then after that will be followed by three weeks of social distancing. So it'll be like last week where it's being, you know, heavily suggested that you stay at home, but it won't be just essential services that can move about. And so I think that it makes sense to go with the date that the governor has proposed of, I think it's May fourth, that the schools are closed until so that they're in a social distancing learning mode. And then maybe play it by ear after that. I know that this this pandemic event is going to be in the long, you know, it's going to be a long term. I mean, there'll be wave one, and then we'll see hopefully a little lull, and then it's going to come back again. And so I would just hate to see that we close things. We, yeah, I know, Chris, that you're saying that you'll resume when it's being asked to resume, but that's not the that's not what you're asking us to do. You're asking for us to cancel all activities through May thirty first. So I would suggest that we change that, that we cancel it through May fourth so that it's in it's in alignment with what the governor has proposed. And and thereafter, tentatively, maybe it's suspended through May thirty first so that it's not most definitely. Does that make sense?
But it it does, Councilmember Fults. And if you if you look at paragraph number two and under background information in the memo, it also does say that staff further support reinstating previously scheduled events and uses as soon as practicable after the COVID nineteen threat has sufficiently passed and support allowing newly scheduled activities and uses at that time. So that that then is is part of the action and part of what council would be approving tonight. Simply stated, that is just as soon as Minnesota gets the all clear for these activities to resume, that's what we will do.
Honor.
Is that it, Councilmember Fults?
Um, I guess it is, but then maybe it should be you're asking us to make a motion to cancel all city sponsored activities occurring at city facilities through May thirty first. And so I don't know, I think it should be reworded then that we're not firmly can't perhaps we will cancel through May fourth and make that a hard expectation, but then thereafter it be tentatively suspended until the CDC or the the governor has lifted restrictions, movement restrictions within the state. I know that's splitting hairs, but I don't want people to because if you say firmly that, okay, we're canceling all activities through May thirty first, then you're saying that like with a period on the end of it. That and that would be the anticipation. And given probably a lot of the spring sports, their seasons are lost, you know, at this point. So who knows who would actually want to, you know, catch the last few weeks. But, you know, I know my youngest is heartbroken about missing the track season. So there might be a lot of kids who would like to get a couple of weeks in if they can get them in in May. So.
Councilmember Leifelt.
Your honor. Thank you, your honor. You know, to Chris's point, I guess the way I'm reading this, though, is I don't think we want to have to meet again if or when Governor Walz sets us back past the fourth. If we change this to say the fourth, then if I correct me if I'm wrong, wouldn't we all have to convene again to push it back further? So to kind of go to Chris Jenkins' point here, if we go to the end of the month with the caveat of, but it is our plan and our hope that we will be open sooner, we just can't start scheduling people as of the fourth right now. Because if we end up having to push that back, that's not a I wouldn't want to be in the Parks Department when that happens. So I guess I would have to agree with what what Chris is presenting to us today. Every one of us want those fields open as quick as possible, no doubt about it. But I would be concerned to shorten that date because every date we've been given so far keeps going out further. So that's, you know, that's my opinion. Thank you, your honor.
Okay, Councilmember Lund.
Thank you, your honor. I guess my question is, would we be deviating from the direction of the state, the governor, for any activities like this? Is the city of Hastings going to be taking a stance of being any different in how we are restricting any sort of activity? Or is our intention to comply with the restrictions and then also with the lessening of the restriction? So that's that's a part one of the question. Part two then would be let's let's not take a date and let's change the language to just simply state that we are going to comply with with the direction from the state. To me, that then erases any need to have to remet to push anything out later. Because the direction is when they tell us, then that's that's our date. And, you know, that seems to be the most clear cut way to go about this unless I'm missing something, and I'm happy to hear it. But you know, to to have to tell people that it's earlier is also a lot of communication. So I don't know if that really alleviates any communication and so forth. So my recommendation would be let's change the dates altogether just to not have dates and just to say that, you know, we'll comply with the the orders from the governor. And if you needed a couple of buffer days or weeks or whatever for us to get our act together, then then let's talk about that and just say, then it's, you know, that date plus X or something because of being able to get staff back together, get the fields in in order or whatever that might be. I mean, build that timeline in. Maybe that's what you're looking for with this too, is a little extra time. And we could do that that way, too.
Okay, Councilmember Vaughn.
Okay. Thank you, your honor. I agree with everybody, but I and I get staff's point of view. But I think what Councilmember Fults is talking about, I mean, when the governor said we really can't gauge this, this is the first time anyone's ever had to deal with this, and we can't put dates on things because it's so unknown. And I think what I'm reading in the memo is we're trying to lump too many things together under one rule. And I don't know if I could see a facility example, the ice cream is, do we keep the ice in? There's an expense to us with that. Versus I get the planning part, we're all staff members, we got to we got to be prepared for it. But there's some things at the pavilion that I'm like, I wouldn't want to do that because they're planning to maybe their event, and maybe they want to keep going forward, maybe they're making adjustments for that. And I don't know if we if we have to bring this back to us as council to agree to this. I think it's more just they're trying to look for some direction from us. And I like what Councilman Lund is saying, let's give them reins to do what they're doing, do what's right. Follow those rules up there, but also protect yourself to say, give yourself enough time to prepare an event. I'm going to support staff on that. That's the right thing to do. But I don't want us to lump it all together and say, here's a date because it's a safety net for us, and then we go there. I think we need to be positive, and I I'm fine with the May fourth or whatever the governor is saying. But we need to work this with the community and say, community, you keep planning, do what you got to do. And if that doesn't happen on May fourth, they're getting the message probably before you and I via Twitter or whatever it is, they're going to adjust and they're going to understand what we're doing on our side. I don't think we're going to be in a battle of when to open it. I think we just got to keep plugging away our staff to get the facilities ready. So when it is time, they have the opportunity. Thank you.
Councilmember Balsonic, sorry.
Yes, thank you, your honor. In terms of what Councilmember Lund has said and Councilmember Vaughn, I think this I think the safest thing because I do agree with them is to say that all of our activities are are on hold until such time as there is a release date indicated by the governor's executive order. Plain and simple. Any dates that we put in are artificial. I, you know me, I'm the retired guy. I'm sitting at home here clicking between CNN and MSNBC. And the governor said today, and they said they reaffirmed this on the news, that we could have as many as two million Minnesotans contract this this COVID nineteen. And, you know, if those projections are right, and this is all based on scientific modeling that the state has been privy to, I just can't see a May four or a May twenty four or anything like that. We're just going to have to go with whatever the executive orders are. So I would just say we're closed until such time as we get an executive order freeing things up. Thank you.
Okay. And I I have to agree, I think as a city, you know, we we have our own mandates, but I think this is it could go longer and it could be shortened. And I think from a city standpoint, I said, if we take our suggestions by the governor, I think that's going to be supported more by our community than if we were to make our own dates. So
Well, sir.
Council, council, I would accept a motion to cancel city sponsored activities activities, excuse me, occurring at city facilities through May thirty first, twenty twenty. Councilmember Lund.
Thank you, your honor. Am I? I guess this is more procedural procedural question, but it sounds like that's not quite what we were just all talking about. So I guess I would ask council, Dan, if we would need to reject that proposal and then create a new one, or do would it be okay for me just to make an amendment to the current one with the date not specific, but tied to the direction of the of the state of Minnesota?
I would say that there is no motion on the floor, so that any council member could make a motion either including a target date or some other reference that would give staff enough direction, though, to be able to carry it out. I mean, that's my only concern with what's being discussed here. I think what staff was looking for is some guidance so that we know how to prepare. But there is no motion on the floor, so you wouldn't have to redo anything. You could bring whatever motion you would want to bring, just so that it's certain enough to be able to act off of.
Okay, then I'm then mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. I guess what direction would be valuable to staff? And I'm looking at Dan or Chris. What what direction would be valuable to you other than what I just laid out, which was do what the state says to do as far as dates are concerned? Can you be a little bit more clear as to what would be helpful?
I think at a minimum, Councilmember Lund, we certainly want to retain the ability to schedule for the scheduling of events just as soon as it's possible. And if if that is tied to an executive order, I think some sort of hint or nod that will be tied to not only current but future executive orders. That gives that gives staff a little bit to roll with. And
I was going to ask, would it be helpful to tie it specifically to the closure of the schools? Because when the schools then open, that's when all of these schools may not open.
I don't I don't think we should tie it to something unrelated. It's unrelated. I mean, I don't know if that makes sense. We should be tying it to a direct correlation in the in the executive order.
Well, it 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 should be a motion that is tied to executive orders with the stipulation that the staff will keep prepared pending executive orders. And I'll make that as a motion.
But just to clarify, so the motions that the what the governor has put forward so far was first, it was, you know, I'm just giving for instances, there, you know, is the closure of the schools where they're in learning mode. And then there is the closures of all, you know, bars and restaurants and things like that, right? And now we're in the shelter in place. And so what we'll see happen is that the shelter in place will be in place for the next two weeks. And then from that point, he may extend it. But what he had suggested in his PowerPoint presentation yesterday was that then we'll see three, three weeks of social distancing. And which then kind of corresponds with the timeframe that he laid out with the social distance, with the closure of the schools and the and the distance learning. And so that's where I was trying to tie it back, you know, back to what specific governor's orders would we be tying the opening of the fields to? And it and so that when he releases the schools to be back in session, if he does, I mean, because nobody really knows if he will, if that's going to be feasible or not, but that would be the trigger to have the the fields open again for youth activities.
Your honor, if I could just raise a point of order. I made a motion before we discuss all of this, there should either be a second or let my motion die. We've done this in the past, and I am concerned about you know, keeping an appropriate meeting decorum.
Okay, so Joe, could you restate your motion, please? And we'll have discussion after it again.
Well, the
Second, if it's seconded.
Yeah, the motion is to cancel all city sponsored activities until such time as there is is a governor's executive order that would be appropriate to opening all city activities with the stipulation that the park and rec department would be sensitive to preparing for such an executive order.
If I can add a quick piece to that for clarification, city sponsored events and activities occurring at city facilities.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Brax. Any other council discussion?
I do have a clarifying question, however. My question is, I noticed that something that wasn't included in this list was city parks, and I understand that we're not going to close city parks because they are outdoor spaces. But my understanding is that some cities and counties have created a perimeter around the playground equipment so that they're not being used. Are we planning to do anything along those lines? Or what is the plan for all of our playgrounds?
Councilmember, we Uh, council member, we uh, we have asked a couple of folks for some clarification. Uh, from the executive order to the infographic that was shared. Uh, certainly, if if the order is to close playgrounds. Uh, we will do that uh, most likely with signage, which is what what most other local governments have done. There are a few that have used some fencing for barriers. Uh, we do not have that. Uh, it is quite an expense, and we would be wrapping that around twenty-one different playground structures. And uh, what we have seen in the past when we've tried to close individual structures is that that stuff just does not work. So we would sign it, we would put it out on social media, we would put it out on our website. But uh, for the point, if that is the intent of the executive order, we will absolutely do that.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Any other discussion, council? Councilmember Line?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I guess a little, little discussion with that for uh, Chris Jenkins is. Uh, I can support a sign, but if it doesn't work. We may have to make that investment. I mean, if that's, if if we, I would ask you to stay in touch with your colleagues, because if it does work in some communities. Then we're gonna make that investment, um, because that's the right thing to do versus. We shouldn't be using the economic thing here, is it's expensive for us to do. But if it's successful, then we should be making that investment, and I would support that purchase because. Hopefully, we're not purchasing something else during this downtime that we could use those dollars for. Your Honor, I'm all in favor of this motion that's in front of us. I just, it it seems like we got a lot of stuff lumped under parks and recreation. Um, there is a few city events there, I get that. Um, because I think there's the uh, cleanup day, and I don't know if that's a park event, that's a city event. Also, so I'm assuming it's all, is this gonna, I think we just need to be very clear that all city, because what if something else that's not? Parks and rec relate, I don't want someone saying, oh, you closed all city activities or opportunities. Because what if it has nothing to do with parks or rec? Um, maybe it's something with our public works, I, a service that we offer. That's the only thing I'm getting a little nervous about with the language of the uh. Uh, motion, but um, otherwise, I think we all get it, we all get what we're trying to do here, um, so I can support that by just the one. A city service that we can still offer get lumped into this uh, also.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes, Councilmember Fults.
Going back to the issue that Lori brought up about the playgrounds, wait, am I in mute? I was just literally this afternoon reading the list of things that are supposed to be closed. With my son and playgrounds was on there. And so it was already a part of the executive order for the shelter in place not to use playgrounds. So um, so so I saw it on like a, um, the. The state of Minnesota put out these nice, like, simple e- easy visuals to look at, and um, it was on there.
Real quick, Mayor. That that's exactly the clarification that we requested of the governor's office. The governor's office put out some nice user-friendly infographics that clearly say. Playgrounds are prohibited. If you read the language in the exec, in the three executive orders directly. There's nothing that even hints at that. The the closest we've been pointed to is uh, closure of amusement parks. Uh, and and can easily point at language in the. Orders saying, public parks are open and encourage people to use them. So that's exactly why we've requested clarification. From the governor's office about. That that infographic that they're circulating that says playgrounds.
Any other, yes, Councilmember Leifeld.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, was just kind of reading through some of those as well just now, um, from the, from the state of Minnesota. And it does say that the great outdoors is still open. So I'm not exactly sure about the need to close parks. I think the social distancing. Um, order and the um, groups is the point. I mean, I would expect parents. That are taking their kids to the park, if they see that there are. Children playing would, I would hope know enough to not go to the park at that time. Um, but if I'm correct, someone tell me if I'm incorrect, that uh, daycares are open?
They are.
So daycares are open. I I'd be concerned that if the order doesn't expressly tell us that we have to close parks. I I think the parents are going to have a hard enough time. You know, homeschooling and getting everything else done if we exclude parks at this time without it being um, absolutely necessary. I'd be concerned for that. I I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be in favor of that.
Well, just to be clear, that's not what I was suggesting. I was asking for, I was just making sure that if we say. These things are closed, we need to be really clear about what is and is not closed, because I think people are confused.
Thank you for the clarification, Councilmember Brax, and and to, just to the overall point with these questions. Um, that, you know, has been asked, Dan reached out to the state to find out. I just wanna state if the information, Dan, you're receiving does not indicate that parks are to be closed, it wouldn't be my recommendation to do so.
And to clarify, Councilmember Leifeld, uh, the the discussion is specifically around play equipment. Or play structures, not the park itself.
So that being said, are you saying that the play structures are to be off limits per the restrictions?
Um, to the information that Dan just mentioned, the infographic that is being circulated by the state. Uh, specifically lists playgrounds. The executive orders do not. We are asking for clarification. Again, if it is the intent to close the playground equipment, the play structure, we will absolutely do that.
Thanks for the clarification, Chris.
Okay, Councilmember Lund.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I I I wanna bring back what what Councilmember Vaughn. Me- mentions and 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 I think that we need to um, do what is going to be most effective to follow. Uh, executive orders, and if that is fencing or some sort of. Physical barrier, I think that's going to be the best. Uh, approach, signage, I think is um, in all due respect. Um, just a check the box, um, you know, method, um, and although. Fencing may be abused or um, circumvented. Um, I don't think a a sign is gonna do anything. So, um, I would, I would make sure that we're looking into that and um, and finding uh, some sort of creative solution. Um, to be able to protect everybody as directed by the state.
Uh, Councilmember Fults, your microphone is on, does that mean you wanna say something?
Uh, no, I'm sorry.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion? Hey, Julie, we do have a, we do have a mo- motion. Um, Clark Flatt, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fults? Yes. Councilmember Balsanic?
Yes.
Number Lund?
Yeah.
Leifeld?
Yes.
Member Brax?
Yes.
Your fast spender?
Yes. Motion prevails. Okay, under administration, we have emergency ordinance authorizing finance department and city administration to waive. Late fees imposed for city utilities. Uh, Dan Moticha, or I'm sorry, Dan. City Attorney Dan Fleagle.
I'll take.
Will help us with this discussion.
Thank you, Your Honor and Council. Uh, you have before you a proposed emergency ordinance. Uh, that would allow for us, we staff waive late fees on municipal. Utility accounts for late or non-payment. Uh, this comes before you because staff received some inquiries from council members. Asking if it would be possible to waive those late fees during the pandemic. Uh, in looking at the ordinance that exists, there really isn't that opportunity for staff to do that. There is a one-time waiver opportunity by the finance department. Uh, that allows when automatic payment is set up, but that is it, so. If the council would be inclined to let staff or direct staff to waive. Um, late fees on municipal utilities, then I would propose that this uh, uh, emergency ordinance be adopted. Uh, and emergency ordinance can be adopted without the normal first and second reading. It can only be done in the state of an emergency, which we do have here, so. Not suggesting it should or should not be adopted, but if the council is inclined to have staff waiving. Utility fees, then this would be a means to get to that end. And I guess I'll, this would also just take us a normal majority vote of council to pass. It would be effective immediately.
Okay, council discussion? Councilmember Balsanic?
Uh, no, none.
Okay, Councilmember Brax.
None for me.
Councilmember Fults? Councilmember.
Tina, you're on mute.
There you go.
I just left it on before, you know? Okay, so my question was in regards to liquor license renewal fees. Uh, it was, I was trying to think of what would maybe be some of the other. Uh, fees that could be coming up in the near term, although I'm not exactly sure what the date is on that, when those are due. But I was wondering if those would be another item that we could um, include with the utility late fees.
Comment on that Julie might wanna add. Uh, we did talk about that as staff. I think the timing of the renewals, I believe, is June or July. Uh, so that I think there would be an opportunity for the council to take some action in the future at a regular meeting. Uh, this is something that is more pressing. There are uh, late fees that are effectively would have been imposed for late payments in the last couple days. So I thought this was more of a pressing item, but Julie can correct me on the exact timing of the payment for tobacco and or. Liquor license fees, but I think we would have additional time to consider that in the future.
Okay.
That is correct. For pawn shops, liquor license and tobacco license, fees are not due till the end of May.
I, if I could just add, uh, liquor stores are considered to be. Yeah, essential. Uh, so, you know, do we really wanna waive any fees, late fees, whatever? With the liquor stores because they are operating. My understanding is you can go into the store. Uh, it's not a curb service type thing or anything like our restaurants. Uh, and so forth, so um. I guess I'd kind of be inclined to leave the liquor licenses. Uh, off of this, uh, off of this uh. Off of this procedure.
Okay, Councilmember Leifeld?
No questions, Your Honor, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Lund.
Yes, thank you. So the way I read it, if they currently have a late fee outstanding from. Three months ago, um, that'll just be wiped out. That's what it looks, that's what it looks like as written, so.
Uh, the intent was to, and I'll, i- the the operative language is the second page from the end, if you're looking at it. Uh, as a document, it'd be authorized to waive late fees for non-payment of municipal utilities. Imposed while the emergencies were in effect, so as I read that and drafted it. I think this would allow only staff to waive late fees that were imposed during the emergency. So I would say no, if it's an older late fee, those would stay on the books. This would apply only to those. And I think practically, it's those that would be, have been imposed, starting on maybe Monday of this week.
Okay, um, so the, the actual. Bill is still owed. How, how do you end up collecting that if we're not going to impose late fees on that going forward either? Is that kind of what I'm understanding? So, anything that's not paid during this period of time will never get a late fee.
I think that's really what's contemplated. It does get rid of the incentive for people to pay on time. It provides a relief valve that will last only during the emergency. The underlying bill will still stay due. And if there is a past due bill and the emergency stops, then the city can consider its other options, which would include shut offs. Or collection of the amounts due, but the, but the fee itself, which is a ten percent of the outstanding bill, uh, is what would be waived.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Lund, I'm sorry, Councilmember Vaughn.
Thank you, Your Honor, and I think um, all that's good discussion, and I think that's why what's in front of us, I take these ordinances um. Pretty serious, especially when we do an emergency one, and to lump it into liquor stores being essential. To us, this is an essential utility that we provide as a service to the residents, so I like us to stay with this as an emergency. Um, proposed ordinance change, and it's only for utilities, and I think that's good clarification with the, our legal counsel that said is. It it does allow them not to pay it, but you're gonna pay, make sure you pay your water bill, because otherwise it's still due. And it just gives staff some flexibility, but I'm okay supporting it because it's just based on one thing. I don't wanna throw a bunch in there at one time. I think we should approach each one separately. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Oh, Councilmember Fults?
Your Honor, I I was wondering, um, maybe we should actually define then the quote-unquote emergency. Because we technically adopted at our last council meeting, the city emergency, and so. I would advocate that that's the date that we use, is that. I think, just think that we should be clearer in this, exactly what emergency declaration are we using for. Um, the start date for this. And then what's the end date? And so again, what's the quote-unquote emergency that we're, end date will it be when the council? Votes to no longer be in a state of emergency? I guess I'm, Dan, I'm kinda looking at you there as to, um, just so that it's really crystal crystal clear what dates we're, we're looking at.
Uh, council member, on the first page of the ordinance, on the third or fourth, whereas paragraph, it does define emergencies to include the federal. State and local emergencies. Uh, that term capitalized emergencies is then carried through to the operative language that I referred to before. So this, as it's drafted, would allow staff to waive late fees when any of the federal, state. Or local emergency remain in effect. And we did discuss that somewhat, that we thought it should continue for all three of those emergency declarations. It wouldn't have to.
Okay. Any other discussion, council? Okay. I would accept a motion to adopt an emergency ordinance of the city of Hastings, amending chapter fifty-one. Utilities section. Okay, any other discussion, council? Clark Flatt, and please call the roll.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fults?
Yes.
Councilmember Balsanic?
Yes.
Number Lund?
Yeah.
Remember Leifeld?
Yes.
Member Brax?
Yes.
Your fast spender?
Yes. Motion prevails. Okay, we are to approve the personal policies impacted by COVID nineteen pandemic. These items will be introduced by Administrative Services Coordinator Julie Flatt.
Thinking, Mayor and council members tonight, we're asking for your approval on one policy and one um, small potential gap funding. The policy is the interim short-term telecommuting policy, which applies to the approximately thirty employees who we have set up to work remotely. Our IT department and staff have worked really quickly to make this happen, and it's working very well. The policy in your materials just provides some framework as well as expectations for telecommuting. Um, it's intended to be short-term and be in effect only during the pandemic. The second item is to approve sick leave gap funding. We may have employees who have limited accrued sick leave and may be unable to work remotely during. The short time period after the call for Minnesotans to remain home and April first, so essentially. Friday night at midnight through Tuesday night, because the um, emergency paid sick leave benefit becomes available on Wednesday, April first. So for those few employees who do not have available sick leave to fill this gap, and if. and if we have determined that they are not essential and they will not be working during those few days, the city would want to pick up the difference so they experience no loss of income. Um it only affects a very small number of employees and the dollar amount is very minimal. If I can stand for any questions.
Okay. Council member Balsanic, any questions?
I hate to put you on the spot, but what's your definition of minimal?
Less than a thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Council member Brock, any comments?
None for me, thanks.
Council member Foltch.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, Julie, could you please um help me in the memo that you provided? What specific paragraph does it say that? The, and that's the second part about um employees without sick leave balances?
What does it say what? The dollar value I did not put in the memo.
Where does it say that policy piece about employees that don't have? I mean, I'm sorry, I'm only seeing verbiage about telecommuting. So.
Now that was in the packet online about the sick leave gap funding, it's a separate memo.
It's a separate memo from this CO two. Okay, I didn't see it in here. Um, so my question is, so what, so what you're saying is that for employees who are being sent home for the shelter in place who can't technically fulfill their job duties while they're at home, you're going to require them to use sick leave balances? Rather than furlough them?
Correct. The city provides sick leave as a form of an insurance policy for this type of, for, for sick leave, for when um they need to care for family members or themselves. Our personnel policy also defines that as quarantine. So we have a very limited number of employees who have been with us just a short time. And so if these employees were off of work Monday and Tuesday, they literally wouldn't even have sixteen hours of sick time in their crew bank. So we would want to fill that gap for them.
Well, I would rather make a motion that any employees who are sent home due to the governor imposing a stay-at-home shelter in place, that they just be furloughed, that they're not forced to actually have to burn their own sick leave, which they have accrued over time in this capacity, because what they're saying is that sixty percent of the population is going to catch this virus in the next several months, and it, that fifteen percent of people who do catch it are gonna require hospitalization. And so I, I just think that it's completely unfair to the employees to it, it's nothing that they've done, they're being forced to stay at home at the will of the governor. And then for them to have to burn sick leave to get a paycheck, and then when they do later eventually catch it or one of their family members, then they don't have any sick leave left to be able to cover that. And so I would rather have s- see a policy where employees who, so just to be clear, employees who are being sent home and they can't perform their, their duties at home, that they're not required to burn their own personal sick leave, that it would be furloughed time and that the city would pay their salaries regardless. Because how unfair is that to force people to burn that? That's my, that's my, that's my total belief. I just think that if we want to be good stewards and we want to keep our people and value them as resources, well heck, let's put our you know, let's put our money where our mouth is. It's like, I'd rather support our employees rather than placing the burden on them to have to um to, to pay for this out of their leave balances. That's my two cents.
Okay, um council member Lund.
Thank you, your honor. Julie or, or Dan, if you could correct me if I'm wrong. It seems like this language is exactly what council member Foltch is asking for. With the exception that um we utilize available sick leave as the first line of uh defense or, or the first, first thing to use. Once that has been used up, then they would technically not have sick leave available. And then we would be bridging the gap, so to speak. So if you read the language, it, it, it is basically covering those that do not have adequate sick leave. Um if they had to use their sick leave um during this time, and then later on needed to use sick leave again, but didn't have any, it seems like this would this type of thing would, would cover that. And we could, we could look at this type of thing again later on as a, as a a possible, if things continue to go on, I guess. I know this has firm dates on it, but um could you talk about that a little bit more? Am I clear in what I'm asking?
The, if, if I can try to answer the question about the dates. Uh a- a- and before I do that, I really, I'd like to emphasize if this even, uh it's really sort of an insurance policy to make sure we don't have somebody slip through the cracks. It's possible that nobody would even slip through and use it. Really, it's just trying to shore that up rather than have something uh unfortunate and unexpected happen. Um, the, the dates that are referenced are based on um, uh tomorrow, end of the day tomorrow, uh the twenty-first, essentially midnight, going into the twenty-eighth. The um, uh governor's executive order for staying at home. Under our existing sick leave policy, uh which is echoed in most of the union contracts, sick leave may be used for, just in general terms, your own illness, care for a family member or for quarantine. That, that language is specifically in our policy. Uh and uh would definitely interpret under the, the situation we're dealing with, with a worldwide pandemic. Uh and uh, and executive orders uh mandating that people stay home. Uh that that would be uh considered quarantine and they'd be eligible to use their sick leave. Uh and it's exactly what sick leave is for, is to make sure that you're able to still get in that uh sick status, whether it's actually ill or, or in quarantine. A- a- and you're completely right on, council member Lund. Uh it's meant to cover the potential of a gap. Uh on the federal level, uh there is a requirement uh that there's some exceptions for employees that would apply to us, uh that if an employee uh is absent from work because of the COVID nineteen, whether it's their own illness or because of quarantine, uh that we would be required, in addition to any accrued sick leave they might already have, provide them uh two weeks, eighty hours prior to if they're part-time of, of additional paid sick leave. So it's that potential gap, that would not take effect until uh Wednesday, yeah, Wednesday, April first. Uh so it's that potential gap between Saturday, uh the weekend uh and Wednesday. So assume it's the work week, Monday, Tuesday, that somebody might be out of work, might not have approved sick leave to cover it, and that's the gap that we're trying to make sure that doesn't surprise anybody with a drop in their paycheck.
Council member Foltch.
Um, first of all, Julie, if you would uh look at the packet and tell me what page the sick leave is on? Because when I look at the packet, I look at Roman, so what is that, the V, Roman numeral V dash C dash zero two in it, there's the cover memo on the short-term telecommuting policy. And then the second page has the policy itself. And then that's three pages long, it looks like, and then it goes straight to the next item, C zero three. So this is, I'm like looking live at the online packet, and so I don't see what it is that we're referring to.
It does not have a Roman numeral on it. Look at the fourth line, says sick leave gap funding.
It says, it is not in the one piece on the laser piece where the whole packet is lumped into one. It needs to be online and the word shows each individual piece, but it was added after the packet was put together.
Oh, all right, well that would explain why it's not there. Um and so, and then, so my follow-up question is then for Dan. Just to be certain, the definition of quarantine, because to be quarantined means that you've been exposed possibly to a virus and you are in quarantine and that you are, um, you are, you're sheltering in your own home, um and, and not being around other people as a result of a direct exposure, which is different from employees being sent home because the governor has ordered a, a shelter in place. That's not the definition of a quarantine. And so I don't feel comfortable in um, in saying that, that um this situation. I, I don't know, I haven't read the, the executive order word by word to see if it defines in there that this that this enacts quarantine language within the unions. I know that Governor Walz is, was um overwhelmingly endorsed by the unions. And so if he's so addressed it within his executive orders that this falls within um this definition of quarantine and is applicable to the union contracts, then I'll go with it. But if we're just interpreting our own definition of quarantine as um that we're just gonna lump sending employees home because the governor has ordered a shelter in place as being quarantining, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that at all. So I'm looking for definitive um legal guidance on what that word got quarantine means and then how it's applicable to the union contracts.
Counsel?
I have a question.
Council member Brock.
Thank you, your honor. Dan and Julie, is it correct, is my understanding correct, that the purpose of this policy is to extend some fairness and kindness to city employees who may have a a gap in their funding in terms of their sick balance? I, I, it seems to me that the way you've drafted this is to help people out. So I don't really want to get down too much in the weeds as to what single words mean. I would rather just understand what is your intent, and I, this seems like something you're trying to do to cover employees in a, in a difficult situation, and I appreciate that. And is that, if that is true, then I would like to call the question.
Council member Brock, I believe that's an inaccurate, a- accurate uh description of it. It, it, it's a matter of kindness to make sure that somebody isn't caught up in the, the circumstances.
Okay, mayor, then I would call the question.
Your honor.
Excuse me, uh council member Leifeld.
To council member Foltch's point, um definitely see that as a city, what we're presenting here is something that would, as you're stating, council member Brock, extend a kindness and allow for that gap. What I think council member Foltch is referring to is more than um extending, you know, fixing that gap and referring to the fact that this is not within our employees um doing. Um your sick leave is for, you know, when you are playing ice hockey and you tear your meniscus and need to take some time off of work, you use your sick leave. When the governor orders that you can't go to your job, that's where business is. And I, and I right now, that's what we are. We're a business. And I look at my own business, and I am an essential employee, um which means I'll be working. But um just a, a brief example of what we're doing, because I, I do have to be at work. We work five days on, seven days off, and we're getting paid for all of them. That is our company's way of reducing our exposure, one, to each other by bringing people into our building, and two, to the customers who are coming to utilize our essential services. Uh granted, I come from a very large company, but that is something that we're seeing. We are being paid for the time away. We also have people who are high risk. They can't be in their jobs because of previous conditions. Those people are also being paid to be gone. They're not utilizing their sick time. They're not using their personal time off, and they're not applying for disability insurance. So to council member Foltch's point, I'm looking at it from my own perspective and saying, you know what, one, yes, I'm very, very fortunate that I'm in an essential job and I'm getting a paycheck, but I'm also putting myself at risk every single day as a result of that essential job that I have. In this particular case, I'm, I'm going to agree with what council member Foltch is saying, in that as an employer, I feel that it is our duty to be um paying these people, paying these um employees, our team members for their absences. That's my two cents.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion, council? Okay. I'd accept a motion to approve the interim short-term, yep.
I'm not sure what's going on here, but uh I've been trying to can you still hear me?
Sure.
All right. Yeah, I've been trying to get a word in here. The only thing to add to this is that uh with the, looking at, looking at it from uh the standpoint of the uh congressional passing of the two trillion dollar uh emergency funding. I think there's gonna be added uh added uh re- remuneration for these employees if they are furloughed or whatever. There's there, there are all kinds of things that are involved that are going to allow for them not to lose sick leave, not to lose pay right on down the line. Uh so I, you know, looking at this, I'm not too worried about it. Thanks.
Any other discussion, council member Foltch?
You know, the more that I think about it, I did see something come through from the League of Cities, that there were a few different options that cities are supposed to be taking into consideration for their um how they're gonna handle this situation where employees are sent home, and one of the actions was furloughing them and not forcing them to use sick leave. And I would have to dig for the um from what I saw come from the league, but I know I read it in the last, like, two days, that um that was something that each city was supposed to take in con- in con- consideration as to how it is that they were gonna handle this particular issue. And so um so I, uh I don't want to see any employees go unpaid because they got uh sent home for this and it's not under their control and they don't have enough sick leave balance. But um I, I, I would like the opportunity for us to have that full conversation um as to what our options are for the various situations. So that, because what's gonna happen is if we force all of our employees to burn their sick leave during the next two weeks that have to stay home, and they're, they're gonna be burning their sick leave. And so when they really do get then, then they won't have sick leave.
Council member Foltch. Dan can maybe answer a question.
It is extremely unlikely anybody is going to be out of work during this stay home. I, 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 I appreciate all the discussion, but, but quite frankly, th- this is meant to cover a less than one percent chance gap that somebody might be affected. Uh all, all this discussion about furloughs and, and additional payment, I, I appreciate it, but, but honest, it's unlikely that anybody is gonna be told to stay home.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Uh Joe, your microphone's on, does that mean you will need to speak?
No, I'm just keeping it on just in case, because
Okay.
For some reason, it keeps cutting out. I would call for the question to your honor.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last part.
I would call for the question in addition to council member Brock's.
Okay, that's a second, second that motion.
I don't know, is there a motion on the floor, though?
The motion is to call the question.
Yep.
But you need a motion to be made and seconded before you can call the question.
Gotcha.
Okay, council, I'd accept a motion to approve the interim short-term telecommunicating policy.
So moved.
Also moved.
Okay, council. Okay, council discussion. Now, any other council discussion? Okay, now I can call the question.
I think procedurally, you should just call for a roll call. There's no need to call the question, and that would take up our votes. So I propose you just go for the roll call right now.
Okay, Clerk Flattin, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Yes.
Member Folch.
Yes.
Councilmember Balsanic.
Yes.
Member Lund.
Yes.
Councilmember Leifeld.
Yes.
Councilmember Brax.
Yes.
Mayor Fassbender.
Yes. Motion prevails. Okay, counsel, I would also accept a motion to approve the sick leave gap funding.
Yes, I'll move for that as well.
Councilmember Brax and Councilmember Balsanic, council discussion.
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion that employees who are forced to stay at home due to the shelter in place order from the governor are not required to use their sick leave balance, that they would be paid a special COVID-19 leave and and that it wouldn't be taken out of their sick leave.
I would second that.
Any other discussion, counsel?
Since I was the mover of the motion, do I have to accept that as friendly?
That's a motion and a second to amend the primary motion. So you should ask if there's any further discussion on the amendment. And if not, you should call for a vote on the amendment.
Any other discussion on the amendment?
And I guess I'm going to caution you that what has been proposed there is a very, very significant financial decision by the council that I think impacts not only union contracts, but some the financial basis of the city paying these employees. So you will take your vote as you will, but I think what that has not been explored, and it's a policy question that I think should be given more time if you are inclined to make a decision of that sort.
Councilmember Lund.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think this circles back to what I was trying to say before, which was if that's what what sick leave is for, it's it is a protection of of income in case of circumstance. And I would imagine that you know, should this become a need and they run out of sick leaves, then then we would have that conversation of what we're having here. You know, this is staff's attempt to protect those who don't have a balance right now so that they do get paid. First and foremost, you should use your your sick leave. It's it's not that uncommon. It's what we do at our company in situations like this, but I think that's what it's for. I mean, to to Council Flegel's point, this could be a significant alteration of what we're looking at here. And maybe would require further consideration.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Leifeld.
Thank you, Your Honor. Okay, Julie or Dan, if you could answer my first part of the question. For the average employee, I know you're talking about a very few percent, 1% of people that this would affect. The the sick leave part, what about what do our average employees have for accrued sick time? What sick time? What do they get per year? Days or weeks? What is it of sick time?
Ninety-six hours per year.
Ninety-six per year? That is separate from their personal time off?
Separate from their vacation, their ability to their compensatory time and the floating holidays we provide.
So the 96 hours, if someone were to need to use this and went through their 96 hours, then what happened? When they're still at home, what happens to the employee's paycheck when the 96 hours is up? What do we do?
I cannot answer that. I mean, the situational, an employee is on FMLA, that's a different instance. So I'm not sure especially what you're asking.
I guess what I'm asking is hypothetically, I work for the city. I go out in quarantine. I'm out more than 96 hours, which is just over, what, two weeks? I'm out those two weeks. I still am not back at work. Was I supposed to apply for FMLA because the of the shelter in place put in place by the governor?
No.
Is that what FMLA is for?
No, that's not what I'm saying. The federal government act that is going to effect on April 1st requires the employer to pay everyone two weeks. So you will have an additional two weeks that we are required to pay. This this was purposely drafted extremely narrowly to just cover a few days for possibly a few employees. It does not, as Dan indicated, contemplate any long-term impacts. If we were to just blanketly say we will never require an employee to use sick leave, I cannot tell you what that cost implication may be.
Okay. Tina, maybe you should take over on this because I feel like I'm not getting my question out there. So if they use their 96 hours, then as a city, we have to give them two weeks because that's what this bill that's coming in place is saying on April 1st. So then we give them an additional two weeks. And our hope is at that point, they're better and they come back to work.
And then we're now requiring them to use all 96 hours first because they the new law where we have to pay every employee two weeks goes into effect on April 1st, next Wednesday. So that gap is very short between Saturday and Wednesday. So the first thing employee will more than likely elect to use is to take the time that the government is requiring us to provide. That's an employee.
So when we talked earlier about the gap, what you're referring to is this is to get the employees to the two weeks that the government says we have to give them.
Yes.
So now we come to April 1st. We've made it to April 1st. We're giving our employees that two weeks. What happens in the two weeks after that? Where do their paychecks come from?
If an employee is still out, they would be required to use their current leave.
So then they go to their accrued leave and then on to their vacation time or what have you?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Counsel, I'm in need of a little assistance here.
Your Honor, I think what's before the council is the motion to amend. That's been you've received a first and second to that. And generally, I think the substance of that motion is that the city would pay employees for any time that they are out as a result of the executive orders. So again, very broad. And I think it's it's much different than what was being proposed by staff for this very small, narrow application. But before you is the motion to amend the primary motion. So if there's no further discussion, I would propose that you call the roll call on that motion to amend.
Any other discussion, counsel? Okay. Clerk Flattin, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Vaughn.
No.
Councilmember Folch.
Yes.
Councilmember Balsanic.
No.
Councilmember Lund.
No.
Councilmember Leifeld.
Yes.
Councilmember Brax.
No.
Mayor Fassbender.
No.
So that motion to amend failed. So you're back to the original motion, which, as I understand it, was to approve the gap funding that would cover the period for just those employees that do not have enough accrued sick leave to get them up to the April 1st date where the other federal law takes over.
Okay. I'll need a motion.
That's already you've already have a motion. You can call for additional discussion, and if none, then a roll call vote.
Additional discussion, counsel?
I just ask for whatever narrative there is that provides further detail about whatever that Congress just passed in the last day or two in regards to mandatory provision of leave because that's when Julie just said that, that's the first time I've heard that. So.
I can send it out to council, certainly.
It would have been nice to have heard.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Leifeld?
Thank you, Your Honor. And in addition to to back up Councilmember Folch's comment there, this is clearly something we can revisit. I mean, when we're looking at this gap conversation right now, right in front of us, and really not knowing how long this is going to last, this is something that we're doing today that will get us to the April 1st. And then the next question comes, we can revisit this, correct?
I'm assuming. Councilmember or council?
That would be something that the council could take up at any time.
Thank you, Dan.
Councilmember Vaughn, did you want to speak?
I just want to wrap it up here. I give staff credit. They were just trying to fill a gap here of a few days to protect us. We're getting into the weeds of what staff does as experts on policies for employees. They are doing what's right for these employees for this little gap funding, and I'd say let's vote on it.
Tipper discussion?
Sure.
Agreed. Let's get on with it.
Okay.
Your Honor.
Clerk, yes, Councilmember Leifeld.
Thank you. And in regards to getting into the weeds in this, I don't really consider it the weeds, Councilmember Vaughn, when we're looking at something. What we're looking at is an immediate effect to get us to April 1st. Now that we've got that two-week response, that does make a difference. That changes the plan. But then I'm also saying, what happens after those two weeks? So, no, I'm not getting in the weeds. So in two more weeks, when we need to get back together to redo this question, I don't feel this is in the weeds. This is where us as council has to ask the question to say, hey, how are our employees getting paid? If this lasts more than the two weeks that we're that this government says we have to pay them for, all I want to know is what happens? Are they protected? Are they getting paid? Are their mortgages and rents getting paid? That's my question. So I'm sorry that you think this is in the weeds, but this is hugely relevant to our employees. So just my reason for why I went so deep into the weeds on this conversation.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Balsanic?
Yeah, we're we're making this way more complicated than it has to be. This is a good resolution. I think it should pass. And as was mentioned, if this doesn't work out, we can revisit it. We can revisit anything that we want to. And that would be my suggestion is to see how it worked out. If there's a problem, we'll take a look at it again. So I'd like to see us vote on this as well.
Okay. Is that it? Clerk Flattin, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Vaughn.
Yes.
Member Folch.
Yes.
Councilmember Balsanic.
Yes.
Member Lund.
Yes.
Councilmember Leifeld.
Yes.
Member Brax.
Yes.
Mayor Fassbender.
Yes. Okay, update on city procedures, services for plans for conducting future city council meetings and public hearings. City Administrator Dan Watichia?
The broad topic. One, the memo that was added to the packet this morning, and part of it was a matter of trying to have it as up to date as possible because things change quickly. But outlining just as really an informational piece, much of what the staff has been doing over the past week and a half, a little bit of a hint at what's to come. Underscores that we've got an awesome team across all of our employees. Certainly has not been business as usual. We've had a lot of adjustments, particularly at setting up remote work as well as making adjustments for social distancing when a physical presence is necessary. At the same time, it also has has been business as usual because our people have been working every day and want to work and do great things for their community. And I do want to highlight a couple of items. I'm obviously not going to read all the memo. The building department pointing out that under the recent executive order, construction activities are something that's expected to continue. That's what we're hearing from contractors that are working. Additionally, guidance we've had from the State Department of Labor and Industry indicates statutory responsibilities for building inspections. Certainly a public safety matter. Briefly, I'll point out two items related to community development. One, last week, the Economic Development Task Force met. And I think under this agenda item, John Hensman will speak to that in a minute here. Another piece I point out in talking with John, the applications that we've seen recently, conversations he's had with those developments, all are interested in proceeding. And we've also had additional new development that's made inquiries in the last week. So hopefully, we will continue to see development going forward this summer. Briefly, wanted to point out, last weekend, we put in place a duty crew at the fire department in order to help make sure we had coverage over the weekend. That was the, at least that first weekend was a fantastic test, something we'll be doing again this weekend. And I would not be surprised. I would expect that we'll find that it has been a process improvement that we continue after the pandemic, just really an improvement in our system, how we do things. I want to point out information technology. Ellen and Quentin and Adam have just been rock stars. We have made them work extra hard this past couple of weeks, particularly in setting up secure VPN links so that we can have people working remotely. In the Parks Department, we have made a lot of adjustments with the field crews so that they can still be out doing maintenance. There was a lot of discussion earlier about having the fields ready. But having that maintenance done while still maintaining social distancing. And also noting with the executive order, actually emphasizing and encouraging people to exercise outdoors. Expect that going forward, we'll have a safety matter of wanting to make sure that we're regularly checking all of our park, playground, athletic field, trail facilities so that they are in safe conditions that people be using during this this stay-at-home time. The Police Department, I want to emphasize, has had an increased presence, particularly in the commercial areas, both open and closed businesses, wanting to make sure that we're visible as well as making sure that we're aware of whatever might be going on and making sure that they're secure. Public Works, similar to the Parks Department, has certainly made adjustments in some of their procedures so that they can do solo work in respect of those social distancing requirements. Also, a recent change has been requiring our bidding documents to be handled through an online portal instead of people coming in and dropping them in in person. So just a couple of highlights that it certainly has been a difficult couple of weeks, but our employees have really stepped up to make sure that we've been productive in the time and or intend to continue providing optimal service going forward. Unless there's any particular questions to that, this really is more meant to be informational. And I know under this agenda item, Community Development Director John Hensman does want to talk a little bit about the Economic Development Task Force and appreciate some guidance from you guys along those lines.
Okay, thanks, Dan. John? John?
Thank you, Mayor, city council members. As you know, at our last city council joint meeting with HEDRA, we established an Economic Development Task Force for COVID-19, including Mayor Fassbender, councilmembers Foltz, Chamber of Commerce President Kristi Bars, well as Bruce Goldfish, serves in our HEDRA board. We did meet on March 20th. The difficult thing that we all have right now is that we all want to be helpful. We're just not quite sure how to be helpful at this point. We understand that businesses are concerned. We've been involved in some conversations and video meetings with the chamber and chamber members. Questions have specifically gone out as to how can we? What we've learned is we don't know at this point. I think that we, along with a lot of other businesses, are just trying to determine what's happening from day to day and that there will be a time likely in which assistance will be needed. And it's comes down to where that would come from. We have we have abilities here at the city through HEDRA to potentially provide assistance. State and federal agencies will be doing that as well. So we we met at that meeting. We came with a couple of different different recommendations. One is to continue to continue to work with Chamber, DBA, banks to determine what those needs would be. We should monitor what's happening in the state and federal end of it so we don't be duplicative in our services. We want to be able to establish a fund. And I think that fund would come out of HEDRA at this point. HEDRA being our economic development arm would be servicing our need to provide assistance in that in that fashion. So at this point, we'd be working with HEDRA on funding there and working with them to establish the parameters of some of these programs that we would be doing in the future. We'll need to to determine how we would strike those funds forward as far as what the priorities would be and what gaps would be out there that some of the other agencies aren't filling. So I I would sum it up by saying this. There's eagerness and desire to be of assistance. It's it's might be too early right now to determine how best that assistance might be. And so we will continue to keep our ears to the ground and be able to act through HEDRA to be able to establish assistance when it comes forward. So I can stand for any questions related to that.
Sorry. Sorry, councilmember Lund.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just just like to follow that up. I think, John, you did a great job summing it up. For those of you that weren't in the meeting, you know, I just want to reiterate that this is establishing a mechanism to be able to react at a future date when more is known. Right now, it the the urge might be to to do do something quickly. The dangers within that are are multiple. One is we don't, to John's point, we we do not know what the money should be used for yet. What what the best use of the funds should be. Two, there's not a ton of money. It's not infinite. So we have to be very surgical in how it's used. Three, there's a lot of things that we don't know will be available that that probably will be available in the coming days, weeks and 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 months perhaps. So we're still waiting for things to pass through with from the federal government. And surely there'll be assistance through the state, county, and so forth, and other organizations. So once we have a better grasp grasp on what is all available to our community businesses, then to John's point, this is really to help fill any gaps that may still exist. And it is the group is not specifically only a a funding group or a recommendation of funding group. There's there's other things that could be done within the community to help business that isn't just a financial stimulus. So I just want to point that out, you know, that this is this is something that, you know, it's a group of people that represent the bigger group of people that want to help out to make sure that our businesses can still stay strong and be well positioned after we get through this to to grow again. So I just wanted to add a little bit more color to what John said.
Thank you, counsel. Any other counsel comments? Councilmember Vaughn.
Thank you, Your Honor. Question for the committee. I'm just curious, did the group talk about a Hastings Foundation? Something that, and this might be for Dan Fleagle, too. Can we have a Hastings Foundation that does not come through an authority like HEDRA that anybody can get money to that that wants to help wherever it goes? And then the the foundation maybe is the distributing person for the dollar amount.
Dan?
Certainly, private organizations and individuals can make contributions. I think there may be some level of prohibition against local governments soliciting contributions for a nonprofit. Certainly, we can all say nonprofits are doing wonderful things and, you know, talk to people in the community. I think that's the only limitation. I don't believe that the city could park funds in a nonprofit for those purposes, but generally promoting a nonprofit for doing those good things, other than soliciting funds, I think would be allowed.
If I could quickly add, I spoke with Mary Mary Belik at the United Way Hastings earlier in the week, and I believe they're looking at setting up something along those lines. I don't know the details, but I think they're looking at that already.
Okay.
Well, I would just I'd like to applaud the city staff because they they have done a wonderful job for this community. And working with them every day on a conference call, I am just so impressed with our department heads and their staff. I also want to thank the community. They have really stepped up together. And we all make a difference when we all work together. So Hastings is is a unique place. And I'm 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 proud to be here as your mayor. And I'm sure my our council is as well proud. So thanks to all the staff for their doing. Counsel, any announcements?
Mayor? Councilmember Brax.
I have a question. This is still on the same point, but I kind of missed my opportunity to ask it when Dan gave his summary. Dan, are there specific logistical or operational changes that are being made with the police and the fire department to keep them safe? I know they have to interface with the public. And are there things that we're doing to try and protect those employees specifically?
That's to Dan Watichah.
To Dan Watichah. Yeah.
Yes, in both cases. We definitely have personal protective equipment, PPE, that they have protocols on when and how to use. There are limited supplies, but they do have that available. We also have been in contact, regular contact with county and state regarding PPE inventories. State's intent is that as materials may be come available through the state circle, state stockpile, strategic stockpile, that it'll go out towards places where there's the most need. So we've certainly had that contact in order to make sure that there's a continuation. They've also done a variety of other changes in activity or protocols in order to help ensure the health and safety of of our employees as much as possible. Police would rather take, if it's something that really can just be a report, take that over the phone rather than in person. For the fire department or EMS, if doing a transfer might previously have involved three employees, it's more likely taking two so that if one person out of the mix. We've also sealed the the back of the ambulance from the cab so that the two compartments are separated in order to help make sure that there's not the potential to contaminate the driver's section. So those are just a couple of examples. But but both police and EMS certainly have changed some protocols in how they're handling calls. They have equipment to protect them. It certainly the the fire and ambulance certainly have gone through decontamination training in the past. And I know they've had some conversations with the police that if there was somebody in street clothes and needing uniform and needing to be decontaminated, how that would occur. Just as a quick overview, does that help you?
Okay. I have a couple of announcements. In response to the COVID-19 pandemic and in order to practice social distancing, all city meetings will be conducted remotely until further notice. We are using a platform called Zoom. This platform is free for the public and can be assessed by computer, laptop, or phone. If you are unable to attend a meeting through Zoom, you can submit your comments before the meeting via email. Please remember to include your name and address for the record. The email is publiccomment@hastingsmn.gov. The city's annual water system flushing and hydrate inspection program began this week and will continue for several weeks. During this time, please remember any discoloration is harmless and the water remains safe to drink. It is completely normal to witness discoloration during the process, and it comes from the iron sediments being stirred up by the large volume of water being moved. The sediments are exactly what we're working to flush out. Tennis sanitation will only collect bagged trash. No loose trash items will be handled or picked up. Please practice, please place overflow trash in tightly sealed trash bags next to your bin on pickup day. All recycling should be loose in the cart as usual, not overflowing. If it doesn't fit in the cart, please call tennis and another pickup or hold overflow items until the following week. Heritage Preservation Commission will meet Tuesday, March 31st at 7:00 PM. Utility Committee of Council will meet Monday, April 6th at 5:30. And our next council meeting will be Monday, April 6th at 7:00 PM. If there are no other announcements, counsel, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion prevails and we are adjourned. Thank you all.